Good evening.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia. Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we're going to approve some minutes. We're not going to do the COW meeting and the regular meeting that's on February 23rd and February 24th. However, we will do the COW meeting from 3:10 and the regular meeting from 3:10. May I have a motion to accept the minutes, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. City manager's report.
Item number one, there was questions about Grand Avenue paving. We did ward that contract. Just wanted to make sure that the council understands that that was a grant that was received due to the fact that the school was there. We are including in our capital program that we will be discussing at the next meeting the completion of the entire Grand Avenue if you guys so approve that. Number two, the city is participating in Take Your Child to Work Day on April 23rd. I would encourage all business owners and people that are attending or any that may be watching that if you have a child, it's an opportunity to let them know what you do. I've done that with my children when they were younger and it was worthwhile. They get to see what daddy does, or mommy if you're a mommy. Number three, Cleanup Day, April 25th, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. There's a flyer on our website. You're interested in participating? We do have organizations signed up. Greg Aliosi is running that portion of the organizational of that event and he's doing a great job. So, I would encourage you, if you have an organization, give him a call and get on the list. Item number four, there's a FEMA mitigation resolution that's on the agenda and this is to maintain FEMA funding with passing this ordinance. And that is the end of the city manager's report for April 20th, 2015.
Thank you, sir. With that, Resolution 145-15.
Is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 14-2015, an ordinance amending Part 2 entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170 entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, to amend Section 53 entitled Schedule 4 Time Limit Parking. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion open to the public, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing non-motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. No motion to adopt, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 14-2015 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 146-15.
Is a final adoption for ordinance number 15-2015, an ordinance amending attachment 107B entitled Enumeration of Permits to Chapter 107 entitled Licenses and Permits of Part 2 entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion open to the public, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk.
Richard Solk in Hackensack, New Jersey. I spoke to you, I guess in the last work session, about the tennis court fees and then Councilman Sims assured me that no one would really be charged this. What it reads now is tennis court rentals, two-hour intervals, two hours no lights, fifty dollars, two hours with lights, one hundred dollars. I would ask you to amend that, and you don't have to table it, but just put in the following word, tennis court, reserved tennis court rentals. Because I could see that, if someone wanted to rent tennis courts with lights, you should charge them. They're excluding others and it's fair. But for the rest of us who just go out and hit a couple of times on the weekend, you could think about putting in a badge system, but this is not appropriate. So, please amend.
I agree. I think we should probably readdress just that part. I don't have an issue with that. I think it's good.
If somebody offered to amend, then we can...
Would anybody like to re... Because those courts, when they're empty, there's no reason they shouldn't be used. I mean, hopefully, the courts would be used at all times, but I don't see that happening.
Tennis court, I would just add, if someone offered to amend, between the word "court" and "rentals," tennis court reserved rentals, then it covers it.
Could I get an amendment on that, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Okay, wait a minute, I just want to make sure I have the proper wording on that.
It's going to say tennis court reserved rentals. In other words, if you call in and reserve the courts.
So, this is a motion for tennis court reserved... Can't spell. Rentals. Okay, so we have an intro with Councilman Sims, the second one with Councilman Pataglia for tennis court reserved rentals.
And obviously, that excludes the Bergen Tech Charter School.
Yeah.
Correct?
No position on that. You see how smooth things are when you're listening to me, Mayor?
We need a roll call on the amendment.
Yeah.
Need a roll call on the amendment?
Hundred percent.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay, we need to close public hearing.
Close public.
Motion to close.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Motion to adopt the ordinance, please.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 15-2015 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 147-15.
This is introduction of ordinance number 17-2015, an ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-53B for a citywide tax reassessment.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 17-2015 is introduced is now passed on first reading and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on May 5th, 2015 at 8 o'clock p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 148-15.
This is a resolution authorizing the refund for Hackensack Junior Track Registration.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 149-15.
Is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 150-15.
This is a resolution authorizing the Traffic Division to remove a handicap parking space from First Street.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 151-15.
This is a resolution designating May 1st through the 7th, 2015 as Youth Week as recognized by the Hackensack Elks Lodge Number 658.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 152-15.
Is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 180-184 Essex Street.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 153-15.
Is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 133 Commerce Way.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 154-15.
Is an award of contract to Arcatis for engineering services related to the combined sewer assessment study.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Now, at this time, is...
Mayor.
You just need to vote on that.
Revolution... Yes.
Okay.
Now, I need a vote, a motion to consider to postpone this, please, a motion to postpone.
Well, we need a motion to consider it first. It has to be brought before the council.
Right. First I'm... Excuse me, I need a motion to consider this resolution. May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Nope.
Uh, no. Now, we need...
Yeah, if you're going to move to postpone it now.
And then I'm going to move to postpone it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we need a motion on the second.
So, I need a motion on the second.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
And that was the motion to postpone Resolution 155-15 to the next regular meeting.
Thank you. Resolution 156-15.
Is a resolution qualifying certain professional service providers after receiving responses to requests for qualifications.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 157-15.
Is a resolution proclaiming Thursday, April 23rd, 2015, Take Your Sons and Daughters to Work Day.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 158-15.
Is a resolution proclaiming the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 159-15.
This is a resolution recognizing May 3rd through the 9th, 2015 as Municipal Clerk's Week.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 160-15.
Is a resolution adopting the Bergen County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan submitted by Bergen County Office of Emergency Management as official plan of the City of Hackensack.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Council... Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Resolution 161-15, the payment of bills.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack that the bills in the following accounts be and are hereby ordered paid.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. And the last resolution, 162-15.
Okay, this is a resolution appointing a successor to fill a vacancy on the City Council.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Will we follow protocol?
Sorry?
Proper protocol?
I was going to read it.
Read the resolution, yeah.
Read the resolution, please.
Resolution appointing a successor to fill a vacancy on...
I'm sorry, we had an offer in a second, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
To fill a vacancy on the City Council, whereas on March 31st, 2015, former Councilwoman Rose Greenman submitted a letter of resignation from her elected office in the Hackensack City Council. Effective immediately. And whereas pursuant to the municipal vacancy law, the council may appoint a successor to fill the vacancy within 30 days of the occurrence thereof. And whereas the council wishes to fill said vacancy until its successor is elected to serve the remainder of the unexpired term at the next general election as is required by municipal vacancy law. Now, therefore, let it be resolved by the Council of the City of Hackensack that Jason Solm is qualified and hereby appointed to serve as a councilperson until the election of a successor to serve the remainder of the unexpired term. Now, we need a...
Now, your roll call. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Okay. But this time, I'd like to bring up Jason Solm. Raise your right hand, put your left hand on the Bible, please. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
I, Jason Solm.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
For the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of councilman.
All the duties in the office of councilman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Solm, you guys sit up here. He's officially called by.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Absolutely. I can sit up there now?
Yes.
Nice. If you get to a side, please.
We'll have to sign.
What I'm going to do, folks, I'm going to open the meeting to the public and what I would ask is if anybody would like to speak on Jason Solm's behalf, Jason's behalf, we'll start out with that part. Then we'll take a five-minute recess when that is done. Congratulations. Okay, I need an offer to open to the public, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, anybody from the public who'd like to speak?
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, you missed a councilman.
You missed a...
Oh.
Oh. Yeah. That would help.
I try my hardest.
Councilmember Solm. Okay.
Running bare bones there for a while.
I have a blank spot in there, that's why.
Okay.
Make new sheets.
I just think I need a roll call, right? On the open to the public or did we do that?
Just, that was that.
Never that.
That was that, it's open.
Always means...
We're open to the public. Anybody who'd like to speak, please come to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk. You have five minutes.
Diane Solm, 151 Prospect, Hackensack, mayor and council. I don't think you could have picked a better representative. I'd like to say congratulations to all of you and I'd like to say congratulations to my son. I don't think his father could be any prouder today. Good luck to all of you and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, Albert Dibbs, City of Hackensack, Upper Main Alliance and Hackensack resident here with Eric Anderson, who we all know. Just wanted to say congratulations. Jerry Lombardo, our chairman, is away this week. I'm sure he'd want me to come up here and say congratulations on behalf of our entire board. We're going to miss Jason. He's been a very active board member with us just in the year and a half he's been there and it's a good choice and we very much appreciate the decision and we wish you all the best of luck and Jason, congratulations. Wonderful news, thank you.
Congratulations, Jason. We look forward to working with you in your new capacity.
Thank you.
Harry Komp, Chamber of Commerce of Upper Main Alliance, Parisian Beauty Academy, 21 Passaic Street, mayor, council. This gentleman I remember as a baby. Your father was a mentor to me, a great man to the city. When he moved from Paramus, his business, and brought it to Hackensack, we were very blessed. His words of wisdom were just, you know, heartfelt and he just meant so much by every word that he said. I know that that's in you, Jason, and I know that you're going to benefit Mr. Mayor and council and the city of Hackensack with this choice. You've got our prayers, our blessings, our support. God bless.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Linda Silvestri. I live at 181 Ross Avenue. I'm also a board of director in the Hackensack Chamber and I would like to say congratulations to the city and I'm very proud to have Jason on the council. I met his mother and his father in the chamber about seven years ago and I became very dear friends with his mother and his father was an absolute tremendous individual that was such an inspiration to me and I'm so proud to see his son, who I've become very close with, to see he's going to serve our city and I know he's going to do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Salvo, Hudson Street, Hackensack. Congratulations, Jason. I knew your father well and I respected the man. He was a sweetheart. I just need you to promise me one thing, that you will represent all the residents of Hackensack in every capacity, not just the Upper Main Street Alliance and just, you know, because it's very stacked against the Upper Main Street Alliance and we, the taxpayers, feel like orphans in the city because we're being neglected. So, I wish you, I know you can do it, put yourself in every aspect to run the city and not just in that one area because you need to acclimate yourself to what's happening here and I know you will be a great asset to our city. Thank you.
I work at 120 South River Street in Hackensack here. I don't live in Hackensack, but I do work here and I just wanted to say congratulations and just hearing about you looking for all of Hackensack, I think you prove that every day because you care about every citizen, even if it's most needy, you and your father and your mom. Your whole family has dedicated yourself to helping the homeless, the people most in need and I couldn't be more happy or more thrilled for your future and I'm just so grateful for this opportunity for you. So, good luck.
Steve Koff with the Housing Authority, Bergen County. Congratulations, Jason, and I know you're going to be a tremendous asset to all of Hackensack because I know that you do care about everybody in this town, you and both your family and you. Congratulations.
Richard Solk in Hackensack and before I turn into the Grinch, Jason, congratulations. I'm sure you're going to do your best and you're going to do a fine job. All right, I want to get back to the agreement.
Rick, if you don't mind, I was going to take a five-minute recess when we're done with him. All right? And then we'll start, right?
I was...
What I want...
I was...
Yeah, I'm going to take a five to 10-minute recess. What I'd like to beforehand is, can the council make comments now?
Jason.
Oh, well, no. Stop, go ahead, go ahead. I thought you were...
I was going to say something nice about Jason. You got the same. Well, that was the first thing I was going to say. It's about time that Jason got up there. Jason, I got to know you last year and a half. I wish you all the best. It's always great to see a comment up there. I'm sure you're going to do your father proud as you already have. I wish you all the luck in the world. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I want to welcome Jason to work with us and I know that you're going to do a good job, you know, for the benefits of the residents of the city of Hackensack. Thank you for accepting the position.
Mr. Sims.
I want to thank Jason for accepting the job and being on the council, sitting next to me and as Kathy Salvo said, we're going to hold him to the fire through his word. He's going to do great for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, welcome. You've got a great representation here, but the most important part of, you know, the people came up and gave the kudos, but it's the groups he worked with. Look who's here, the chamber. How old are you, Jason?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years old. He's on the chamber, Hackensack Chamber, Regional Chamber of Commerce. He's on the Main Street Alliance. He works actively with our shelter over on River Street, longtime Hackensack family, Hackensack business. His father, who I got to know pretty well and is probably one of the main reasons I'm sitting up here, believe it or not, so he used to get dragged into his office and sat down, pretty much had, you know, read the riot act on what I needed to do and, you know, I'm sure if some of the people in the room probably sat in that seat, I'm looking at Harry and he's smiling at me, so they know exactly what I'm talking about. But what better way to honor your father than this? This is just, you know, an honor and I'm sure, as Diane mentioned, you know, he sees this, Diane, we know he's watching this and he's got a big smile on his face right now, I'm sure. Jason, like Jason just said, is a graduate of Hackensack High School. He's a blue and gold comet. He was a wrestler at Hackensack High School, I don't know whether, you know, played football too. He's involved in the youth sports. He coaches junior wrestling. He's well-rounded. We're looking forward to work with him. So, it's an all-around fit. The biggest thing, believe it or not, which Jason brings to this council, which has been lacking on many councils, I think, for quite a while back, is youth. There's been no young folks on this council for the longest time and I think that's a good thing for many different reasons. It gives you a different aspect. They have different ways of thinking. They think outside the box, which I think is great. But not only that, with the way the city's moving and with redevelopment, I think you're going to see a lot of younger people living in this city on Main Street and they will have somebody to relate to around their age, so that's very important. And looking forward to working with you and should be a good thing. Thank you, Jason, appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Do you want to say something?
Your turn.
All right. I just want to thank everyone for coming out and supporting, family, friends, colleagues and above all else, I'm up here with a esteemed group of councilmen and I want to see this city become a greater place. You know, we always hear about what Hackensack was. I want to see what Hackensack can be. So, you know, I'm going to help with these gentlemen, I'm going to lay the foundation for this city and it's going to become the hub of Bergen County again and that's what I'm looking for.
Amen. All right, let's close public and then reopen and everybody come back. This time, I'd like a motion to close to the public.
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Solm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. You're going to have trouble with that Sim-Solm thing, I can tell already.
I got it.
That's going to be an issue.
It's going to be good.
We may have to split this up somehow, Sim-Solm.
Algebraically.
Yeah. All right, at this time, I ask for a five to 10-minute recess so we can chat a little bit amongst ourselves and then we'll reopen to the public. Thank you.
If you want to go.
Motion to open to the public, please.
Need a second.
Need a second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Costino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Soam.
Aye.
Mayor La Russ.
Aye. Mr. Salkin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. I would like to continue a discussion of the recent deal with the medical center. I went through some of the technical flaws during the work session. Something that's disturbed me, you mentioned that you felt fearful that the whole deal was going to be upset, that it was challengeable. I don't know if I can do this in five minutes, but I'll sure try. The history of it was, we were going to do it, and John, you may remember, I mean, I know you couldn't vote on it, but the discussion went on during your first term.
Oh, actually, it preceded me. Two thousand and five, I was two thousand and nine, or two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight, but the...
I think the deal was in before I was elected.
You may be right. I was thinking of the lease agreement, which was executed in two thousand and nine. Okay. In the prior deals, in the prior instances where prior councils were able to get some of the hospital property on the tax rolls, you had the Medical Arts Building, the big building up on the campus, and the then council, that was under Jack Zies's council, convinced the hospital to convey the improvement to a holding company. The land remained in the title of the hospital. So therefore, the improvement became taxable for about forty years, forty-three years. That was that deal. Same thing happened with the parking garage on Atlantic, the first Atlantic Street part, the two thousand and two developers' agreement that I alluded to earlier, owned by, conveyed to a holding company. That's why it's taxable. The last city council was involved in this, and we were going to do it the same way. I was brought in as special counsel. I was not the city attorney, but I'd had experience from the prior dealings. And the improvement was to be taxable, to be held by a holding company, and the land, of course, would be tax-exempt. But the hospital came to us and said, "We would be jeopardizing a six or seven million-dollar grant from the state, so please, let's brainstorm and do it differently." Hence, we knew they were going to need some kind of permission for the air rights over Atlantic and Second Street, and that's how we structured it. And that's why the assessment of the parking garage was tied to it. And that was a public discussion, and I remember Regina quizzed me on it, Kathy Costino quizzed me on it at a public meeting. I think you were there then, John, I think. All right. I think this is a really bad deal, and I'm gonna just do the math. So bear with me. You get four point five million over three years. That's in the agreement. The taxes they're waiving by dropping their appeals, I've checked with the assessor, are worth three million dollars total. That's the Medical Arts Building, I keep calling it that, and the school, the learning center, whatever it's called. All right. So that's seven point five million. The balance of this first lease term is forty-three years. At your flat rate of two hundred thousand dollars, that's eight point six million. So I'm giving you, on that side, I add up the four point five, the three million dollars, and the eight point six, and I come up with sixteen point one million dollars. Now, I am willing, because I've already gone through these numbers, we're gonna hold, what the present formula was, coming out to about four hundred thousand dollars on the assessed value of the parking garage, and thirty thousand dollars for the crossing guard that's being given back. Four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And I'll let you, for the forty-three years, say, the property's not gonna appreciate in value. That's nonsense. You know it's gonna go. I bought my house for eighty, when I had a house, eighty-five thousand. It's assessed at four or five times right now. You know property values go up, commercial values go up. But for purposes of this, we'll say it's gonna be constant. You know, in thirty years, crossing guards are gonna make more than thirty thousand dollars a year, but for purposes of this, we'll keep it at thirty thousand. So four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the forty-three years, eighteen million four ninety. You've made a gift of close to three million dollars to the medical center. Plus, and I know another way to say is, I don't wanna turn this into fire and brimstone, but you've really thrown the residents to the wolves on these ambulance services. And let me, this is the memorandum of agreement, because I don't, with all due respect, I don't know if due diligence is exercised. No one seemed to be aware that the air rights were subject to a lease, which was subject to an ordinance. That seemed to have passed by. Additionally, the ambulance service was subject to a memorandum of agreement, a separate agreement. And here's the language from that. HUMC hereby agrees that no city resident shall be billed for the EMS services provided by HUMC in accordance with... Can I just finish, if you don't mind?
I'll let you finish.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. The new agreement says this. Effective January first, ambulance services provided shall be billed directly by Hackensack University. That's just, that's just awful, because you, you know, have you ever had a bill due, or known of anyone had a bill due to the hospital? And, you know, the residents are not gonna know there's any protection, and I just think it's terrible. One other thing, John, and, you know, I don't know, you and I have had this similar discussion on some other topics. I don't know if you're just getting bad advice, or you're getting no advice, or you're ignoring advice, but when this matter was discussed by the city council in executive session, you were present. It's like when everyone, when the Rotino matter came up, and Rose Greenman looked in the back with you guys, everyone was like, at the edge of their seats, you can't let this happen. John, you should not have been present. But the one good thing about you having done this is, somebody, the best thing that happens in the city is somebody bring a prerogative, Rich, to get this set aside. This is really a bad deal, and I just wish you guys could have, you know, just the final note, well, never mind. Thank you for your time. You really need to think this through and do better.
Next, please.
Regina Depaska Parker Avenue. So we have a pair of ambulance bills now. Gave that away. Thanks.
If I'm not mistaken, they're only still billing the insurances, which they did before.
Uh, you know what? They, trust me, and you know I know.
Well, we know they were doing that the whole time to certain people, but they're still only supposed to take...
The hospital was trying to collect every penny from every person, even if you live in Hackensack. And I can't go much further, but you know I know.
They're still just collecting from what we were told, what the insurance company is going to give.
From what you were told, I know. I know from practice. I know from what I do for...
I've seen the documents. You've shown them to me.
I know. The hospital will bill Hackensack residents no matter what. Now, if they're gonna rely on that, that they can bill us above anything insurance doesn't pay, thanks. So it's like, you know, what are we getting here? What are we getting? Mr. Tress, you know, I didn't call you on this last time. I wasn't feeling that well, but I'm back in form. Not, I don't know anybody that believes that you, on your own volition, went back and looked at Mrs. Pataglia's raise, because that's what you said you did, and don't believe it. You can say whatever you want, none of us believe it. Just want you to know that. It doesn't hold water. All right? You just went and did that all on your own. Mr. Soam, I wish you luck. I have a feeling you're gonna need it, though. It's not easy up there. I wanna make it clear, Mr. Soam is no longer on the Board of Directors of the Upper Main Alliance, correct?
Correct.
I also, I wanted that seat. I put, I expressed an interest in that seat. Nobody got back to me. Nobody even got back to me with a no thank you. Okay? I have been involved with these people for years, years, helped them, and they have not appreciated what I've done. Okay? And nobody even said no thank you to me. So I hope you do well there. I hope you get a little better treatment than what I feel I've gotten, because all somebody had to say to me was, no thank you, we're interested in this, that, of what I was told they were interested in. Somebody that will run for reelection in November, supports redevelopment, and can get votes. And that's, that was the requirement. So I hope you have more requirements than that. You're gonna have to show me. Okay? And I mean you no disrespect, none at all. I just know what I have done, what I've been through, and I just feel like, you know, a thank you. A thank you would have been good. And I hope everyone of you is gonna vote in the Board of Ed election tomorrow.
Thank you. Next, please.
F. J. Williams, 208, Mr. 151st Street, New York. Mr. Mayor, and particularly the city manager, I got a problem here that I experienced the other day, and in light of everything going on with the police department, I called the police last week for an incident that I had in Hackensack, and it was getting out of hand. When I called the police, I called 911, and they responded. When they responded, there's glass to the front, they could have walked in the front door, so be steady to the door, but instead, they came in the back door. And when they came in the back door, they rushed me. They said, "Get the hell out of here." They didn't ask me no question. I couldn't talk. I couldn't say anything, and they said they was busy and they didn't wanna hear it. I think that was wrong on the police department coming in the back door. I think, because you could see me in the glass door. So I know if I had left, or I had resisted any type of anything, and plus two, each time I come here and I make a complaint, I feel you disrespect me, because you never look into any of the complaints I have until I put it in writing. And I put it in writing some time ago, and I sent a letter to all the council members. But when the police come, even if I go inside to make a complaint in the police station, they won't let me make a complaint. "Oh, come back. What do you want?" They talk to you like you're a dog. There's no courtesy. And in light of everything that I've seen happening, and I know how the police work, basically because I worked with them as a bounty hunter, and I see it, I'm even afraid for myself now, the way they respond. If you call them about something going on, they say I'm wrong. I recently had somebody call and say I was bothering their kids. To me, that's a serious thing. I don't bother kids, and I don't talk to kids at all, but I just think, the police department, you gotta know how to talk to people, and I think they should have let me talk. Unfortunately, in that particular time that I was there, everything was recorded, and I tried to make a complaint elsewhere, so I said, "The hell with it. I may as well." So that's why I came here tonight. I was at Metropolitan Hospital. I had to leave, because I wanted to come here tonight and make this a matter of record. But the officer, I don't know the name, they said it was busy, and if you're busy, then why did you respond? Three police cars came, and I just got pushed out of the building. So I don't think that was right, and like I said, last time I was here, when I told you about the building department and things that I see, you just, it's disrespectful to me, because nothing ever happened, just like I'm talking to the wall. I'd appreciate if you'd give me a little more respect than that. Thank you.
Could you, Mr. Williams, could you tell me the date on this, please?
I think it was last Thursday.
And the time?
About twelve, eleven, between eleven-thirty and twelve.
Evening?
Uh, AM.
AM, Thursday morning?
Yeah.
I'm gonna direct the city manager at this time to please contact the police director to investigate what happened here, please.
Okay, and if you like.
You have the address as well?
It's the CFA building on First Street. If you like, the person with me took a videotape of it.
I would present that. I wouldn't show that. Well, you could give it to the city manager, but I would prefer you give it to the police director.
Nah, I don't wanna give it to anybody.
Or if you wanna show it to somebody.
Yeah, I'll show it to them.
Yes. The CFA building's on First Street?
That's correct.
In your first name, Mr. Williams?
F., period, J., period, last name Williams.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next, please.
Catherine Salvo. Oh, I'm learning a lot of things about the hospital. When we had the problem with the emergency, we did the ambulances, and we got rid of our whole ambulance department, because we were supposed to go with the hospital, and they were gonna give all the residents free service, and they didn't. And I, myself, came up three times and showed the proof that my mom had gotten a bill three times for it, and the bottom line was, is that they shouldn't have even issued the bill. I mean, that had to be part of the agreement. You know the person lives in Hackensack. Why are you issuing the bill? And Leo knows he had problems with that, too. They told him. So we're really getting ripped off on this in every aspect that we can. We also talked about bringing back the emergency services to Hackensack, because they are the first responders. They're located district-wise, like each ward has its own fire department, and they are the first responders, and they know the street well, and they know how to do it. So we were going, that was one of the campaign considerations, that you might think about getting them back again. And the only reason they cost this, and we can make money on this deal, the only, because we can get the money from the insurance companies. The only reason they cost this money is because the so-called volunteer ambulances, they didn't, their personnel didn't show up on weekends, and then the fire department would have to pay somebody time and a half to take over, to fill in those positions. But we're a big city, and we should have, ambulance is twenty-four-seven, and it should be like it was under the arm of the fire department, because that's when it ran most efficiently, and that's when it ran the best. But somehow, with this last administration, they had, that they had to give it over to the county, and the county was gonna do it, and they had some kind of thing that the county was gonna, and that all fell through. So I really think that you should look into it with the fire department on getting it back again, twenty-four-seven, and it can be, it could be a moneymaker for the city. We got our ambulances back, and then we charge the residents. Don't pay, but the insurance company would pay the rest. And we still have, we still have this emergency, we still have the volunteers on the weekend, which I can't understand how a big city still has to pay, pay money to volunteers to do that, because that does cost us money. We have to pay for the, we still have to pay for the ambulances. But the Hackensack Medical Center has been charging the residents money and trying to get away with it, and I didn't even know that that was part of the renegotiation. This whole thing was a big surprise. Okay, thank you. Oh, and property maintenance is terrible. The building department is still dysfunctional. There's so many violations. There's so many illegal three-family houses, people living in attics and in basements. And like Lenny said, if you wanna develop Hackensack, you have to clean it up first. You don't wanna look out your window and being in a beautiful, new spanking new building and seeing all the junk, seeing tow trucks, garbage bins that aren't covered. The CVS is a disaster on Main Street. I reported them to corporate offices. That CVS is horrible. The parking lot is dirty, the dumpster is still exposed, and no CVS in Florida, or Keenac, or anyplace looks like that. They're getting away with it, because they can get away with it. And I think that property maintenance is a very important part of redevelopment, and if you have to clean up the city, make it appealing to people, because you're not gonna rent an apartment and walk out your door and see all the stuff that you don't see anyplace else. Sanitation is still a problem. They're not picking up stuff, this rubbish stuff, only two items, which is ridiculous, because all the taxes we pay, and you're only allowed to put out two items. They haven't picked up rubbish December, January, February, and March. That's four months that people couldn't put it out. So now they're still only allowed to put two pieces out, when we couldn't put it out because of the snow. These are, other towns give the service, you can put anything out in Lodi, you can put anything out down the shore. You're not limited to what goes on. You bundle up your garden waste, and they don't pick it up, and the rain comes, and the recycles, we're losing so much money on recycles. We don't provide people with the right container. If you come down, in my neighborhood, there's not, nobody even fills a recycled container. So we're losing, we're losing tons of money on recycling. So we need somebody to head that sanitation department slash recycling that can handle efficiently. And so far, it's not happening, and I'm very disappointed with that, because that was one of the campaign promises. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
people couldn't put it out. So now they're still only allowed to put two pieces out, when we couldn't put it out because of the snow. These are, other towns give the service, you can put anything out in Lowry, you can put anything out down the shore, you're not limited to what goes on. You bundled up your garden waste, and they don't pick it up, and the rain comes, and the recyclers, we're losing so much money on recyclers. We don't provide people with the right container. If you come down in my neighborhood, there's not, nobody even fills a recycled container. So we're losing, we're losing tons of money on recycling. So we need somebody to head that sanitation department slash recycling that can handle efficiently. And so far, it's not happening. And I'm very disappointed with that, because that was one of the campaign promises. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Nick. What are we gonna do about Machio's yard?
Mr. Tross, could you please send property maintenance over to look at, what's the address on Newman Street, do you know?
71 South Newman, and a place next to it. That cannot have a CL, either one of those places. If it does, God bless America. There's no way in hell, no sign, the place has looked like a...
Severely flooded today.
Taxi, when they, when they tow a car, I got all the taxis, stuff as much as I can from other towns, and when they tow a car, they have to have a lot that is what?
Closed.
My backyard, somebody's backyard. Where do they tow a vehicle to? It has to be a licensed lot.
Has to be their lot, has to be an enclosed gated lot, lot.
Yeah, well, how do we determine what, you know, there's a lot of this.
Or it can be inside, one or the other, if they have the room.
It has to be both.
Right.
So how do they tow the cars down by Berlous Court, by, off Johnson Avenue? How does All Points have two yards there? And how do they even get a license to tow All Points, Hackensack Auto Record, their yard is, those cars have been there more than 30 days, and I don't even know how you get to have one, two, three, four yards, parks in the street, cars parked in the street.
I agree with the street parking on that, Mr. Nick.
Cars, he has a house, he parks the cars...
You're talking about John Street, right?
John Street, Lee Street, Atlantic Street, and then, you know, you're talking about the oil, and what, you know, what the cars, what kind of accident it had, what's going on the ground. I mean, these are 30, these are 30, 40-year deals. The Hackensack River, the Court Street Bridge, I'm trying to get the reason why that bridge doesn't open when your boat goes up the river. And then, you're doing the Midtown Bridge, or looking into the Midtown Bridge?
The county is. The county controls the bridges.
Yeah, well, they get a lousy job at that Court Street Bridge. Federal law, all streams, rivers, fishable, navigable, and swimmable. We have no DEP in New Jersey. We burnt out all the wetlands in New Jersey. All the streams are shot in New Jer, not all, Bergen County, they're all shot straightened, which just shouldn't straighten the stream. All the soil goes in there. I turned River Edge Inn by Denau's Restaurant to junk along the Brook, that's a 30-year deal. And I turned in Oradel, the buses, and P.S. and G., and they have a construction order, an Oradel on the Hackensack River. This is stuff you just see. The Riverkeeper has got himself a nice corporation, set the $1 million building on Main Street. He knows when to talk, who to talk to, who to get the money from, and I don't like him. It does nothing for Hackensack, except have a $1 million that I don't pay taxes on. I'm glad the Main Street Alliance was here tonight, I'm glad everything's going great. I just don't know what the heck it is. And the only thing I know, so I know what I don't like, that the taking down of the bank building on Main and Mercer and Moore, and I know I don't like the idea of a bus station on Moore Street and River Street, which it brings too much, too many buses, and the buses bring cabs, and it's not someplace that I wanna rent. And you're talking about building and building, I see build, 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 then I see a spike, that property would spike the Main Street redevelopment, and it would spike the board property by putting a bus station there. I don't even know how we could entertain it. And the DPW, I've offered through the years, I've offered to go down there and help them clean out, but we gotta organize the town.
Thank you, Mr. Nick. Anybody else? Seeing none, motion to close?
No, thank you, Jason, again, and thank you, you guys.
Hold on, hold on, roll call. Seconded by Mr. Sohm.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Costerino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sohm. Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Thank you, Jason, again, and thank you, guys, for coming. Be safe.
Mr. Sims?
I want to thank everyone for coming out. It's Saturday, we have Slam the Junk Day, starting at 9:00 AM. We're gonna meet at the Culture Arts Center and clean up Hackensack, hoping we get some participants from the audience to help out. And thank Jason, and wish him all the best up here. Regina and Kathy, I appreciate everything that you guys do for me. Thank you.
All right. Yes, Cleanup Day is Saturday, since the Board of, four members of the Board of Ed here, maybe we can see some of you guys out there on Saturday helping us clean the city up. Yes. Oh, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to thank everybody. I forget it's Halloween. I'm ready to get to work, that's all.
I got it. Where was I? Oh, Board of Ed. Saturday, Cleanup Day, your election's over, so if you guys have any time, come on out and help clean up the city, be glad to see you out there. You, too, Frank. I see you hiding in the back. Cultural Arts Center, 9 o'clock, 9 o'clock in the morning.
Free coffee.
Free coffee, gloves, plastic bags.
I'll be there. Pizza for lunch.
So, I want to, want to again thank Jason for stepping up to the plate, and we appreciate it. There's a lot of work in the city, you've seen what's been going on, glad to have you be part of it, so thank you. Mr. Nick, I want to address something you said about transit, that without transit in that area, redevelopment wouldn't, probably wouldn't happen, you have to have buses.
What's that, a bus terminal, not transit, a bus terminal?
It's New Jersey Transit buses. People have to catch the buses somewheres, and those are within walking distance, and there's gonna be bus stops up and down the streets.
I'm for that, but not a parking garage like one.
Well, here's the quick option on that. New Jersey Transit buys that lot from the county, then you have an open parking lot with upwards of 20 buses staging themselves there all day, versus a plan we put into place, which puts them underneath in a hidden area.
The bus, I'm there, I'm just there for the three, I'll hop in down like four, five times a day, Saturday and Sunday. There's not a lot of buses yet, there's a lot of camps there, they're walking around.
What New Jersey Transit is looking to do, they have their buses queued up all over the city, as Mr. Pass was pointing out, they're parked up on Thompson by the hospital, they park on Summit Avenue in the morning, two, three buses, they're staged all through the city, and they're looking to put them in one place, which I happen to like that idea, but if that's gonna happen, we wanna control where that's gonna be.
And that's not gonna be taxable, that part.
That's not true, they'd be paying a lease on the property, if we did it the way we're planning it, so. I want to thank everybody for coming, I know everybody who was here for Jason has gone already, but I want to thank them also. Everybody have a safe trip home, and we'll see you in May. Thank you.
We need a motion to...
Motion to close. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Costerino is absent. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sohm.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.